We worked through the last two days, recognising that we are facing grave global uncertainty, recognising the need for greater review of our institutions and our work programme, concerned about the stability and security of sister nations such as Haiti, engaging with our international partners from the Secretary-General of the United Nations, the President of the European Union, the President of the Latin American Development Bank, CAF, the President of the Caribbean Development Bank, the President of the African Zim Bank, and the Commonwealth Secretary-General. We spent the majority of our time in caucus because, as was indicated, if ever there was a time for full and frank discussion, particularly to inform not just decisions today but approach and strategy as we go forward for the rest of 2025, it is now. I want to thank from the bottom of my heart all heads of state and heads of government. It is said that we may well have been reported to the Minister of Labour for unsociable conditions because we went from nine thirty yesterday morning to after quarter past one this morning, and we started back at nine thirty this morning, and without a break for the day, we are concluding with this press briefing now. It is fair to say that we had a very good and constructive meeting. We are not in any way daunted by the challenges, but we are approaching them with a calm confidence and a recognition that unity more than ever will be required from us to meet the common challenges that the world has presented, from the change in geopolitical environment to the climate crisis, to the international economic shocks that are potentially still there, to the consequences of the climate crisis with respect to the production of food or the consequences of diseases such as bird flu that can lead to an unfortunate increase in the cost of food, to the recognition that as a community we must continue to expand. We had the honour of welcoming through the signature of France and Martinique the possibility of Martinique becoming our newest associate member. It is still subject to the ratification of the French Parliament, but our engagement with them has been strong, and we are satisfied that all things will proceed there. We focused on a range of issues, and I'm going to call on different of my colleague heads to speak to aspects of them, recognising that there may be implications first and foremost for our trading environment. Prime Minister Wholness is responsible for our external trade negotiations and was able to guide us with respect to some of the challenges that we may face going forward. We were able to address the issue of freedom of movement, and one of the major decisions of the conference is that we will settle the arrangements that will allow smaller numbers of members of the community to act if they so desire rather than requiring unanimity for action. Why is this important? Because if that protocol for enhanced cooperation is completely ratified by the end of March, it opens its way for a number of countries to be able to admit the possibility of freedom of movement for CARICOM nationals from the first of June with the accorded rights of primary and secondary education, emergency health care, and access also to primary health care, recognising that families will move and that this will be the suite of rights that will be available to those countries that would want to participate in the freedom of movement. We are conscious that this region, with the exception of Haiti, has an acute problem of a declining and ageing population, and therefore it is imperative that we move away from the gradual approach to the freedom of movement and move to the point where those of us who believe that we are ready for it can open up to ensure that that possibility, which has long been like the holy grail of the integration movement, can now become a reality in this year of 2025. We also spoke about the urgent importance of maritime transport and air transport, but in particular building on the arrangements, the initial discussions and negotiations we've been having on ferry transport. We invited the private sector to be able to look at other opportunities with respect to how this can be facilitated with access to specific charter services rather than the governments assume the responsibility for the purchase of equipment. And at the same time, we set up an intergovernmental working group to be chaired by the Minister of Foreign Affairs from Trinidad and Tobago, the Honourable Emery Brown, who will also have with him a number of other ministers from Barbados, Jamaica, Antigua, and Guyana, St Vincent and the Grenadines, to be able to identify within the next six weeks what has to be the work programme for the mutual recognition of driver's licences, insurance cover, insurance products to cover vehicles in multiple countries, the harmonisation of the customs and phytosanitary regulations necessary for the seamless movement of goods, and to be more specific, to dismantle fifty-seven barriers, non-tariff barriers identified by the Caribbean private sector organisation that are currently affecting the smooth movement of goods in particular across the region. We were able as well to interact with the executive director of the Sandals Tourism Group and agreed on a number of things that would see us accepting that the experience of Sandals as a tourism lab will help us improve all that we are doing in tourism to make us even more competitive than we have been, recognising that there must be an approach, and both the Secretariat and this Caribbean private sector organisation have agreed to create a list of products at the granular level in agriculture, in manufacturing, in entertainment that are regularly used by the tourism sector so that we may better align it with the production possibilities within the community. In addition, that there be a review of all hospitality training in the region. Sandals has a university, many of our countries have hospitality training institutes, we would wish to see an alignment of all of those training opportunities for us. And of course, the final thing, to be able to work with the Caribbean Hotel Association and this Caribbean private sector organisation for Sandals to be able to work with them so that we can discuss how all of our tourism properties can be appropriately greened and can be appropriately digitised, digitise their systems so that the region can remain competitive in this matter. I'm going to ask Prime Minister Rowley at the appropriate time to also address the issue of crime and security, but suffice it to say that there were intensive discussions with respect to how we move forward in this area. We also agreed on a number of matters pertaining to the adjustments that we will have to face with some regional institutions as a result of the geopolitical developments that may leave some of them that were dependent on aid and technical assistance from external bodies, and we will have an urgent review such that those institutions that are affected that we can meet the deficit that we will face with respect to them. The community took a clear decision that after twenty-two years since the Rose Hall, the expert working group that prepared the reports that eventually were discussed at Rose Hall in Jamaica, that there is need for us to commission, very quickly but not a long study, a review of our governance arrangements and our financing arrangements. But we were very clear that we are committed to remaining a community of sovereign states but would wish to deepen functional cooperation and to explore the possibility of greater political presence in the region, recognising that sometimes you may have to have people coming to work every day to help interface with the international community on matters of foreign policy, foreign trade, and security, such that it does not take away from the work of individual heads of government and heads of state because the world is a far more globally interdependent place, even though we are seeing entities or regions break down into blocks. The reality is that the Caribbean has strategic objectives that we must meet, and therefore we recognise the urgent imperative of having another political voice, but it will not be at the expense of our current constitutional arrangements. The Treaty of Shagaramis, the revised Treaty of Shagaramis, is premised on the simple fact that we are a community of sovereign states, each of us that commit to working with each other, in the same way that you will see in the African Union or the European Union, a community of sovereign states seeking to work with each other. We were able to also take a report from the concerned parents with respect to CXC, and we've asked for them to meet with CXC to remove any misunderstanding or to improve what are their concern, to improve the response to their concerns. But in addition to that, the community took a decision that the time had come now for the establishment of a CARICOM Educational Transformation Commission, and over the course of the next few weeks, we will complete the terms of reference for that commission and the composition of that commission because we all accept that our educational systems are not fit for purpose, they were designed for a colonial period with a hierarchical structure that only saw a few of our people and not all of our people, and if we are one to be able to ensure that we produce citizens fit for the time with the appropriate social and emotional learning targets, it is now. I want to also say that we took a decision to accept the recommendation of the Regional Judicial Legal Services Commission for the new President of the Caribbean Court of Justice to be appointed, and that is Mr Justice Winston Anderson, and we congratulate him on the agreement of heads to his appointment to the highest position of the Regional Treaty Interpretation Body, otherwise known as the Caribbean Court of Justice, and the final appellate court for a number of countries in the region. We also agreed to commission the work for the creation of a treaty to be able to have the University of the West Indies effectively repatriated and not to be the output of a royal charter which is no longer appropriate in this modern age. It may seem to be something that is very out of the way and unusual for persons, but we need to be able to perfect the opportunity for our institutions to function. The President of Guyana presented to us, and he will here again quickly, on the matter of agro-food security and the wider issue of cost of living, given our concerns about the extent to which the climate has impacted on production from some of our source markets and indeed the risk of bird flu as we go forward. And we were also able to exchange with the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, who has committed and over the course of the last three years has moved effectively from minimal support to almost the financing of significant number of projects across each country, many countries, I should say, in the region. We were also able to benefit from the announcement of a number of initiatives from the Canadian Government, which will be distributed by the Secretariat for a number of technical projects and digital skills upgrade, as well as also participation of a $10 million grant in the CARICOM Climate Resilience Fund, which is to unlock other private sector funding to be able to allow our businesses to better prepare themselves for adaptation to the new climate resilient project. These are the major decisions. One of the major ones, sorry, Prime Minister Mitchell will take responsibility with the Premier of Bermuda, David Birch, for a review of the telecommunications environment. Many of us use WhatsApp, Netflix, all of these things for which there is little or no payment, but the reality is that these entities earn, and I'm not only talking about CARICOM member states, but I'm talking also about Dominican Republic and Puerto Rico. We were informed by the CPSO, Caribbean Private Sector Organisation, that they earn as much as $11.6 billion a year and they pay no taxes, there is no contribution in any way to the regional economy, and at the same time, the absence of revenue to the telecommunications firms mean that at the very time that we need to be looking at reinvestment in making our telecoms infrastructure sturdier, it is not there. We are in the stage of exploration, and Premier Birch and Prime Minister Mitchell will work with me as chair to be able to put the community in a position to be able to better level the playing field, to ensure that there is fairness to the consumer, fairness to the provider, and a competitive environment because we are conscious that Caribbean as a small region, region of small states, has higher telecoms costs than we would normally like to see as compared to other regions. So I'd like to stop at this stage, and before the end of the conference, my dear brother, Prime Minister Rowley, is here. This is going to be his last engagement at a CARICOM Heads of Government Conference, and as I invite others to speak on the different areas, I would like to also ask each of my colleague heads to pay the appropriate tribute to someone who has given more than four decades of service, not just to the people of Trinidad and Tobago, but to this Caribbean community. And may I say that his knowledge, not just as a prime minister or a political leader, but his training and experience in the area of geology and energy has been invaluable to our considerations on a range of topics, and I know that we will miss his guidance and his very firm positions on a range of issues. If I had to pick out a few, I certainly was an extremely proud person to have Prime Minister Rowley at my side when we had to confront the issue of Venezuela and President Guido, and when there was a determination to have a change of, a recognition of the change of head of government, nobody gave us any chance of being able to make any difference. But we, Prime Minister Rowley, myself, and the then Prime Minister of St Kitts and Nevis, who was Chair of CARICOM in 2019, we went to New York, we met with the Secretary-General, we met with different regions of the world, we then went to Montevideo in Uruguay, we met with the European Union, and what appeared to be an impossible task was all of a sudden achieved. And if ever there was a person that you would want at your side to fight any battle, Keith Rowley is one such person, and I want to commend him for his excellent work to this community as we go forward. The last topic is that of Haiti, and we have asked the representative of the Presidential Council of Haiti, Mr Laurent Sancerre, who joined us on representing the government and people of Haiti, we've asked him to be here this afternoon, as you would appreciate, and as was referred to in his speech on Wednesday evening, the United Nations Secretary-General has met with us. I'm not going to go into the details of some of the things that have to happen, but suffice it to say that the region continues to be committed to ensuring that Haiti is stabilised and that the security situation can be brought in to order. We are not yet at that stage, and we call and will continue to work with the international community to ensure that the promises which have been made and that the ability to act with dispatch can be realised. This situation with Haiti in this last incarnation goes back to the gas riots of September 2022. It has been an unacceptably long period of time to bring stability and relief to the people of Haiti, and you will appreciate that there are some matters that are delicate discussion stages, and therefore suffice it to say that Caribbean community expresses solidarity with the government and people of Haiti, that we will work with the United Nations and all of the other friends of Haiti to be able to ensure that Haiti is in a position to be able to have its elections in a fair and free way and to be able to give expression to the will of the people as to who should govern that country. With these words, I would like to stop, and I'd like to invite my brother, Prime Minister Wholness, to be able to address on the issue of the trade implications and aspects of the very challenging environment within which we have to prepare for other eventualities, but we do so with calm assurance. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, Prime Minister Motley. First, let me say thanks to your government and the people of Barbados for the excellent arrangements and hospitality. My own view, Mia, is that the meeting went very well, and I join with my brother, Erfan, in filing a claim to your Labour Department for having us work till one o'clock in the morning. But it was all good for the people of the region, and I believe...
I'm going to beg Prime Minister Davis to defend me. Thank you.
And I believe the people of CARICOM can feel confident in the leadership. The issues that were addressed were relevant issues, issues for the development of the region, and we grappled with them in real ways to seek solutions. One area of grave concern would be the declared change in US trade policy. Many businesses have reached out, the private sector is indeed concerned. I believe that the posture of CARICOM is that we must be prepared. We can't approach this with any panic, and we should also accept that with these changes, the concern shouldn't only be that there would be disruption in the normal routine of trade, but that there could also be great opportunities for the region. The region has a well-established office for trade negotiations, and it has worked very well for us, and we are using the incredible resources in that office to study the challenges that could come and to provide us guidance, all the governments in the region, guidance as to how we should structure our trade policy to both mitigate any fallout but take advantage of the opportunities. We will therefore be conducting a very detailed review of our trade situation with the United States, and we hope that in another three or four months, we will have a document which will give us a policy direction and give advice and support to the governments of the region as to how to treat with any potential change that may happen in US foreign policy. We also discussed issues of security, and I know that Prime Minister Rowley will deal with the security issues, but while I have the microphone, it is of critical importance that the region treats with the issues of gangs, and Jamaica has taken a very strong position on treating with gangs. We see gangs as an existential threat. Obviously, the ultimate case would be with the situation in Haiti, but we also see gangs acting in ways and committing acts that can only be described as acts of terror. And therefore, I have called in Jamaica, and I'm making the call now at this CARICOM platform, that there needs to be a global war on gangs in the same way that there is a global war on terror. If the gangs are allowed free rein, they will challenge the effectiveness and undermine states, which we are seeing happening not just in the region, in CARICOM, but in the wider Central and South American region. So we discussed the issue. I believe there is general consensus that in addition to treating with the security issue from a public health perspective and treating with the root causes of social disenfranchisement and economic marginalisation, that there needs to be a firm hand in treating with the gangs, particularly as it relates to the transnational element of the gangs, which means that the countries in the region would have to have greater cooperation and sharing of intelligence and resources in tackling this very grave threat.
Thank you, Andrew, for the comments on both of those issues. I'd like to ask Prime Minister Rowley to address the issue of crime and security as the lead Prime Minister on security, given where Andrew left off just now. Keith?
Thank you very much, Chair Lady. We spent a lot of time discussing, strategising, and taking decisions on an issue which is common to all of us in CARICOM, and that is the unacceptably high level of violent crime. So we focused on the legislation, law enforcement, and the public health aspect. With respect to the legislation, we agreed that notwithstanding social considerations, we agreed that the changing nature of crime is such that actions of acts of violence in the public space in certain instances must now be regarded as acts of terrorism. We're talking here about indiscriminate shooting in a public place where the perpetrators endanger all and sundry. In order to address that, we believe that the legislation needs to be cognisant of what exactly we are experiencing now as against what the existing legislation anticipated. And to that end, heads sourced and obtained the services of a former AG of Belize, Godfrey Smith, who has been tasked to review our legislative templates and to come up with new legislative proposals for consideration by the heads for changes to be made on the legislative side to treat with what we are experiencing as against what we are surprised by. We also expect that these acts, using the tools of trade of the criminals at large in our communities, from Bahamas to Suriname, St Lucia to Trinidad and Tobago, that they be deemed to be acts of terrorism and allow us to view them not only by the executive but by our judiciary and allow us to fashion the appropriate legislation with it. So we adopted the working definition of crime and violence as a public health issue since the effect on human conditions are such that violent crime largely carried out by firearms, eighty percent of which of the killings that we're experiencing are done by firearms, and ninety percent of those firearms are coming to us from one particular source. So we agree that this is a public health issue, and of course, we will continue to engage it as such. We also agreed that the George Bridge Declaration, which was put in at the second regional symposium in Guyana where we engaged crime as a public health issue, and took a certain suite of decisions to engage it as such that we will continue to adopt those declarations. We supported the aims of the recommendations of the Needham Point Declaration, and these are all positions... And these are all positions taken by Caricom heads. Which should flow into actions through legislative and other arrangements. We further agreed to appoint a high-level representative on law and criminal justice. Supported by a multidisciplinary team of technical experts, including those seconded by member states. And approved the terms of reference to design and lead implementation of a strategic plan. To improve and modernize criminal justice delivery services. Across the Caribbean community as one element of a holistic region-wide, with regional-wide approach. What this means is that we would not be struggling at the individual level as sovereign bodies. But accepting templates designed to suit our culture and our experience. And using the best technical skills in law and in social services to craft. Legislative offerings that we can all adopt very quickly, and there are some deadlines applied to these matters. So basically, these are the foundational things that we're doing at the level of the heads. Acknowledging that one of the highest hurdles that we are required to overcome. And to treat with at this time is the high level of violent crime in our societies. And the organized commercial arrangements of criminals who terrorize our populations. Whether they are large ones or smaller ones in the community. So we maintain our high priority on that. And we expect that the changes that we are about to bring about in a number of areas in a holistic way. Would see us getting the upper hand and reversing the trend. Which in some instances are in fact threatening the very sovereignty of the states in which we are, in which we live. So that is as much as I can say at this point in time.
Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to ask Prime Minister Davis to address and update us very briefly. On the issues pertaining to climate and also with the associated states. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just behind our challenges with crime, as was spoken to by my fellow Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago. The next existential threat to us is the climate change and the climate crisis. And discussions were held around what we thought the outcome of COP twenty-nine was. Um, we, we, we thought that the outcome was mixed. We did not get all that we wished. Um, the one, the one significant outcome that will help each of our states and small island developing states. Is finally, they have settled on the protocols to access, um, to access the, the voluntary market. Voluntary carbon market and its compliance, which is what is deemed Article Six provisions. That was settled finally after decades of negotiations. And I would, so member states are now called upon to, to, to register. And identify the authority to whom the UNFCC could provide information and keep them abreast of how that market is emerging. We, we also, what was disappointing in a sense, that is deja vu to me. And that is, in nineteen, in twenty fifteen, there was an agreement to set up a fund. Which was supposed to be funded by our, the North, what I call the Northern Region, of a hundred million dollars per annum. For small island developing states. That was twenty fifteen. Nothing has happened to that. There's very little contribution to it by those who committed. And, and at COP twenty-nine in Baku. We then, for several years, attempting to see how we can shake up. And have the, what I call the, those who are committing and, and pledging to live up to their pledges and commitments. Decided to come with a new regime, which we call a new collective quantified goal. It is to take the place of the hundred million dollar, um, regime, which devolved anywhere. And replacing with another regime, and we hope it goes somewhere. Um, again, that was agreed. I think the, it was intended to, um, to be set up to have funds made available. And we will continue our quest to ensure that that is properly, properly funded. And we can, all I can say is that we should continue on our advocacy to ensure that not only finance is available to. To small island developing states like us who are most vulnerable to the climate change. But also to ensure, but also to ensure that, also ensure that there'll be easy access. And timely release of funds once, once a request is made and, and it is made available. I think the other, um, matter we talk about, the associated states, we have, um, we have Turks and Caicos Islands. The British Virgin Islands, Montserrat, Cayman Islands, Bermuda, Anguilla, and, uh, and Bermuda. Who are all, um, what we call associate members of Caricom. They're associate members, of course, they're still colonial in this, they're still colonial states. And there's been, they're troubled because two of them, the constitutions had been suspended, that was TCI and BVI. The TCI, um, suspension is finally being lifted. And relief is being had where the will of the people of Turks and Caicos Island will be now more prominent. And they will be, will definitely be carried out through their elected representative. Before then, it was stifled. Um, BVI, they're still in a, in, um, still have their constitution suspended. There'll be an assessment as to whether or not that their constitution will be reinstated. And that assessment is going on now. Uh, we in Caricom, uh, of course, we believe in the self-determination of, of, of our, our fellow. Uh, members, and we are urging, um, the powers that be to release and let go. Um, the, these, these countries so that the people's will can always be carried out. And, um, there is a UN mission called C twenty-four that speaks to the, the decolonization of, of these, of these islands. Um, written in a recent, a recent commentary suggesting that that entity is now irrelevant. We have to watch that, and even though they have sort of rolled back that statement. We have to be concerned that they don't believe in the decolonizations of these small islands, or these islands. And we will be continuing to support them in their quest to ensure that the will of the people in these communities. Are carried out through their properly duly-elected representative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Philip. Um, as I move to invite President Ali to speak. Um, I want to commend him for an offer made to all of the people of the Caribbean community. In the context of our discussions on education and upgrading of skills. Guyana has opened something called the Guyana Digital School. That will make available to all citizens of the region the opportunity to participate in, um, digital learning. Schoolchildren of schoolchildren age predominantly. And I am going to ask that the video which we received as heads of government be distributed to every country. So that the public affairs or government information services of every country. Um, ensure that the citizens of the region are capable of taking part in this very, very appropriate. And, and, and useful initiative that can only enhance the skills of our people. Um, President Ali, with respect to being the lead as Prime Minister on agriculture, sorry, President of, um, Guyana. As lead on agriculture and food security. And by extension, in this particular moment, implications for cost of living. President Ali?
Thank you ver- thank you very much, Chair. Members of the media, we are indeed, uh, meeting at a critical time. Not only from a trade and geopolitical perspective. But also from a food security, food production, and food price perspective. Twenty twenty-four would have seen major impact in the region. As food prices for cereals, meat, dairy, vegetable oil, and raw sugar. Increase significantly on the global market. Of course, we import those increases, we import those inflation. And we have to manage within that context. However, twenty twenty-five is adding a lot of worry to the situation. Increased climate-related challenges, increased transportation and logistics costs. Uncertainty in tariffs and rules, trade rules. Would have a significant impact on the cost of food globally and here within our region. Just to give you an example, board flu as we know it was first reported around March twenty twenty-two. As I speak to you now, the current situation as a result of board flu is alarming. There's a twenty percent decline in egg production from the US. And you would know that we source most of our hatching eggs out of the US. We source table eggs also, many of the countries source table eggs out of the US. For a matter of fact, in some regions, when you look at the year-on-year increase. In the cost of eggs since the first reported case of board flu, it is seventy percent increase. When you look at egg prices as of January this year, in the US, there's a fifteen percent increase in the prices of eggs. When you look at poultry meat. There is a eleven percent decline in production as I speak to you in the US. And as you know, the US occupy about close to thirty percent of global market share in terms of poultry meat. So, we have, we are discussing the impact of these challenges for the region. And important for us is to look at the full supply chain. To look at alternative supply routes. And to look at ways in which we can enhance and integrate our capacity and capability. To withstand what could be a major shock in the global market. If Brazil become affected, then we will have major problems in terms of prices and supply. So you would not only have a price problem, you would have a supply problem. These are the challenges that we will face in the first, at least in the first half of this year. And we must be able to plan a strategy that would allow us to withstand these challenges. In relation to our twenty-five by twenty twenty-five program. As you know, this program was crafted during COVID, just before COVID, during COVID. And since then, we have made significant progress. If you look at from twenty twenty-two to the end of October, November twenty twenty-four. We would have had about a twenty-four percent increase in food production across the region. We would have had major investments in infrastructure to support food production. Whether it's cold storage, farm-to-market access road, solar drying facility, loan approvals. Establishment of dairy facilities. We have seen significant increase in private sector investment and lending. In the agriculture sector and the food production chain within the region. However, given the current situation. We have established a holistic framework through which the industry and a food system must be built. To ensure resilience, sustainability, and competitiveness. We also want to build a food system which encourages young people and women to participate. We are also, in the last four years, we've also had significant investment. That will see the Situation Room and Data Center to help our farmers with predictive data. Predictive analysis and real-time information. That investment, which includes a school ascent of excellence. Is currently on the way. Investment in a regional food hub and developing a platform through which. We have technical support across the region, which have already started. In a, in addition to these issues. The Chair would have asked for a number of projects to be developed so that we can pursue financing. Projects that would achieve the resilience and sustainability and competitiveness of the food production system. And agriculture in the region. And with the Inter-American Institute for Cooperation in Agriculture. We identi- we have identified six projects that we're going to pursue. Billing capacity for Caribbean agriculture extension services. And the goal of this project would be to monetize extension services. To boost productivity, competitiveness, resilience, and rural employment in Caricom countries. The second project would be enhancing adaptive capacity of coastal communities agro-marine system. The goal is to strengthen coastal community resilience to climate change through integrated agro-marine value chain. The third project is the establishment of a digital fabrication lab, which is a fab lab. The goal is to promote technological innovation in agriculture and tourism via the fab lab to bridge the digital gap. And this project will see the building, equipment, and management of a fab lab. Emphasizing youth and women capacity building for tech-based solution in food production and agriculture. Heavy focus on agro-processes, public-private partnership, women, youth. The fourth project is diversifying the Caribbean fruit crop industry. The goal is to develop a sustainable fruit crop subsector to enhance food security. Through structural production models and value-added products. The key action would be to establish a John Plasmin Ban, promote precision agriculture, and foster public-private partnership. The fifth project is a bioeconomic model in organic waste management. And this will be to strengthen the Caribbean economies through innovative waste management and bioprotact generation. Finally, improving water security and climate resilience. The goal is to enhance water security for smallholder farmers. Mitigating climate-related risk to food and nutrition security. And that is, in summary, the projects that we must pursue to achieve. to achieve the objectives of sustainability, resilience and competitiveness. So as a result of this holistic approach, we will now be expanding the focus to achieving not only food security but resilience, sustainability and enhance technology with greater participation among women and youth by twenty thirty. So we are adding some additional goals. We are, we are successful in expanding production notwithstanding hurricanes, storms, floods, all of which destroyed production and our productive capacity. But our farmers, our policymakers would have shown tremendous resilience in reinvesting and ensuring that our focus on increased food production and food security remain a priority for the region. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President Ali, for that comprehensive report. Laurent, would you wish to address? Thank you. On Haiti, thank you.
I would like to say thank you to Barbados and the Secretary-General of CARICOM for organizing this meeting. I would like to inform you also that we just opened a new embassy in Guyana and appoint, appointed a new ambassador to CARICOM. This is our commitment to participating in the community and show our support. I believe Prime Minister Motley mentioned the most important things related to what Haiti is going through in terms of insecurity. I don't need to go into details. But the Presidential Council is committed to organize elections at the end of this year so that we can have a new elected president by February twenty twenty-six. But in order to have a credible election, we need support to tackle the insecurity and the gang violence that we are facing. So we are counting on all the countries that help us through the MSS, but also countries out of the CARICOM community because we cannot resolve this problem by ourselves. So we're counting on everyone because this security crisis is not only in Haiti, but is transnational. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also would like to report that the community established its, reaffirmed, sorry, its unanimous support for the candidacy of the Foreign Minister of Suriname, Mr. Albert Ramden, for the position of the Secretary-General of the Organization of American States. We anticipate that that vote will be next month. But we are very, very clear that we are fully behind the Foreign Minister, Albert Ramden, for the appointment of this post. He would be the first such Caribbean national to hold that post, should he be successful. We also expressed our support for a candidate for AICA, the Agricultural Cooperation Agreement of the Americas, in the form of Dr. Mohamed Ishmael, who is a Guyanese national who works in Belize in the area of agriculture. And we look forward to supporting him. You would recall that in our own instance, Barbados had Dr. Charleston Brathwaite, who was head of AICA for a number of years. So he, we are supporting Dr. Ishmael for this post. I'd like to open up for a few questions. I know Prime Minister Holness has a town hall meeting with his nationals this evening at the university. And I would want us to be crisp and direct with any questions. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister. Could I ask members of the media who would like to pose a question to just raise your hand, say which media house you're representing and your name, please? Can we start here?
Thank you. Crystal Hoy, Barbados, CBC-Barbados. CARICOM has spoken about the US from a trade perspective, but given the Trump administration's approach to deportation, was that a matter discussed, given its impact on the Caribbean diaspora in the US? And what support is CARICOM providing to those who may face deportation? And will there be a CARICOM response or an individual national response?
I think we all agreed that the most important thing is for us to have the information attached to the persons who will be coming back. All of us accept that it is the right of any government to determine who should be within the jurisdiction of the particular country. The President of the United States and his administration has made it clear. We have asked each in our own right for that information to help us to be better able to prepare. We hope that at some point within the next month or two to have a high-level engagement with the United States government, generally not just on this issue. And suffice it to say that each government is making its own arrangements. This is not a CARICOM issue per se because citizens don't go to CARICOM, they come to individual countries. So it is up to each country to make its own arrangements for the reception and resettling of those persons.
Thank you, Prime Minister. Gentleman here.
Yes, Emmanuel Joseph, Barbados today. What is the deadline for this new legislation with respect to regarding gangs now terrorists? And while guns, guns is not new, what is happening in the meantime to deal with the importation of guns which is causing, causing lives?
There is no set deadline except that an element of urgency is asked for. And we anticipate that given the quality of the legislative experience put on it, that in a matter of months, we can have something to work with. So basically, that's what we have been able to accomplish at this stage. And with respect to the tools of trade, of the criminal element, we will continue to attempt to deprive the operatives of those tools and to work alongside the suppliers. And we have been successful with the United States government. And even though there's a new administration in place now, one of the issues that we intend to raise with them is for continuation of their cooperation with CARICOM countries with respect to treating with this matter, which is of mutual interest to us because the security of the Caribbean nations ought to also be a matter of the security of the United States and its southern border.
Thank you, Prime Minister. We'll take a question in the room, then we'll move online. The gentleman, Mr. Richards?
Me?
Yes.
Peter Richards, Caribbean Media Corporation. Given the fact that the United States government has adopted new policies vis-à-vis trade as well as migration, did the meeting decide whether or not it is important to now hold discussions at the highest level, and I say the very highest level, with the United States on that issue?
Absolutely. And as I said, I don't want to place a date. But as recent as this morning, we were in contact with the Special Envoy of the President of the United States of America for Latin America and the Caribbean, and we fully anticipate that there will be a high-level meeting soon. Thank you.
Prime Minister will now move online. We'll take a question from Denis Chabral, followed by Jermaine Abel. Mr. Chabral?
Good evening, Chabral Demora. Madam Prime Minister, can you please explain to us what's the pharmaceutical agreement among Guyana, Barbados and Lithuania about? And how much will it cost the Caribbean and when will the pharmacy begin operations? And secondly, to the President of Guyana, sir, if you'll permit quickly, what are, could you elaborate on what are some of the options to counter the impact of bird flu on eggs and poultry meat?
Okay, with respect to the first aspect, there is no cost because we're talking about building out a regulatory environment within the context or rather modifying our regulatory structures to facilitate that by a pharma environment. With respect to the second part of the question, I think President Ali answered that extensively in his opening part of the discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Abel, online.
Hi, good evening. Just excuse me, my voice is a little bit muffled. I'm dealing with the flu. I want to get quickly, and this goes back to a particular question that was asked a little bit earlier by my colleagues there. It has to do with the whole issue of Trump's policy decisions. What are we, what's, did CARICOM specifically discuss the issue of, of, I know you said, Madam Prime Minister, that, you know, we're going to have some discussions. But in terms of, at this point in time, is there any, was there any discussions within the CARICOM community regarding the impact of the potential fallout economically from especially Trump's tariffs? And also the food bills that can be, excuse me, that can be had from, from all the implications that we potentially are going to see from this specifically, from his tariff implications?
I think that Prime Minister Holness addressed this comprehensively in his opening statement. I don't know if he wants to add anything further to it. Andrew?
Just, just to point out that we're dealing with right now speculations as to what the tariffs could be. There have been no announcements relative to the region, the CARICOM region, specific to tariffs. What we are being is proactive and preparing. The citizens of CARICOM should know that significant resources are invested in a trade negotiation mechanism, which is a standing, well-established mechanism that deals with trade issues, not just with the United States, but with all our trading partners. And what we're doing is to look at what the potential fallout could be if there is an adverse use of tariff relative to the region. Now, we also should be very much aware that as there may be changes in the future, the changes may not all be negative, they may not all be disruptive. The changes may very well present opportunities. And so equally, we're looking at what the situation could be from the positive side as well. What we don't want to happen in the region is panic. And so we are taking a very proactive approach in preparing for whatever changes may come. The region is resilient, the region is strong, we have strong leadership. And we are prepared to negotiate, we are prepared to discuss. And I believe we have strong bases on which to do this. So I would not want the region to take a panic approach to this issue.
There's this one point I'd like to make there for the public, and that is, yes, we have to understand that as trading nations, especially a nation like Trinidad and Tobago, where we are engaged in trading significant products, we are exposed to deal with the information if it comes our way. Tariffs are an important part of the management of international affairs. And we are engaged in world trade and our major trading partner is the United States. So the decisions made there, we are exposed in some ways and therefore we have to be prepared to see whether they affect us negatively or whether they create opportunities on the positive side. But we are in fact engaged.
Thank you, Prime Minister. I'll just take in the order in which I saw the hands. The lady in the black top and the gentleman beside her, then the lady with glasses on her head, then the lady in the blue top. Starting in that order, please.
Thank you. Marcel Thomas, The Starbuck News. I'm just seeking clarity on the interface of CARICOM with the, with Washington. Has CARICOM asked the US administration for a meeting with President Trump? And my substantive question is beyond the usual paragraph about the solidarity of CARICOM with Guyana as it relates to Venezuela. What has this summit agreed to say in light of the recent shootings of Guyanese soldiers?
Like your statement will go condemning the shootings as well as continuing to express solidarity with Guyana. Secondly, I've already answered the question with respect to the high-level engagement with the United States government and the President and the Secretary of State.
Good evening, everyone. Akash Samaru, Guardian Media, Trinidad and Tobago. Prime Minister Rowley, looking to now deem acts of violence in the public space as an act of terrorism. Can you elaborate a bit more on how exactly that is going to help deter gun crimes? Because we've, we've seen it, we called a public health emergency in the past, there was a ban on assault rifles declared. At least in TNT, we've not seen an ease. In fact, we're in a state of emergency right now. So how will calling it an act of terror now have the impact we're all hoping for? And it won't just be more, and forgive me for this, platitudes.
What we're saying here is that the actions themselves, because they endanger people indiscriminately, that is what makes it an act of terror. And then we need to craft our legislation to take that into account, to strengthen law enforcement and also to assist the judiciary in treating with acts of that nature because they are such an existential threat. So it's not the law that we have in hand now, it is what we will review, modify and present going forward.
Have we not tried that before, Prime Minister?
This, Prime Minister Holness wanted to speak.
I think the region should begin to consider carefully that the level of criminal enterprise that exists is at some times over and beyond the capacity of regular law enforcement and regular legislative tools that are available to treat with ordinary criminality. The use of violence in a criminal pursuit and then the spread of fear, sometimes deliberate, that comes from that, to weaken states, to undermine institutions, to corrupt public officials, to make the state incapable of addressing the issue, should not be treated as ordinary criminality. I only need to point to the situation that exists in Haiti. And then to just turn slightly from that to what we see emerging in other CARICOM countries with gangs that are arming themselves deliberately, stockpiling weapons, seeking, as I've said before, to capture communities and corrupt public officials. That should not be considered as ordinary criminality. That is a threat to the state and Caribbean nations must face that squarely and call it what it is. These are acts of terror and they are oftentimes transnational. The criminals in Trinidad may have links to criminals in Jamaica. Certainly, the criminals in Haiti are transporting guns to Jamaica and possibly likewise. Certainly, criminals in Miami, who some of them are our nationals, are illegally trafficking weapons to Kingston. And therefore, the government of Jamaica alone trying to treat with the issue would not be as effective as if we had a global approach, a regional approach and certainly a CARICOM approach to treating with this issue of criminal enterprise. We call them gangs, but I maintain that that is a euphemism. They are not just socially marginalized youngsters who have been deprived of social and economic opportunities. Many of them have gone into this as an enterprise, as a business, looking to weaken governments. And we must take a very strong approach to it from a legislative perspective to create the laws that will enable us to have surveillance, to detain them. Of course, within the accepted rules of human rights and the treatment of citizens. But certainly, there needs to be, what we call in Jamaica, enhanced measures to treat with this new and emerging threat to our democracy.
And I think you'll be clear that one of the things that we are distinguishing ourselves ourselves from previous meetings on is the commitment through the George Bridge Declaration to work together, but also to repurpose existing regional institutions, to strengthen them at this very time when the possibility of other states being put significantly at risk in terms of their existence and viability is immediate. As Andrew said, we have the example of Haiti, and we are committed that in the context of a community such as this, there has to be coordinated approaches to intelligence. And in some instances, we may well have to consider how at a functional level we go beyond supporting each other. In the Eastern Caribbean, Barbados and Guyana, we have the benefit of the regional security system. There may be need to strengthen aspects of that. We've asked those officials responsible for impacts and the Joint Regional Communications Center, as well as the regional um security system and the individual law enforcement entities, to see how best they too can modify how they operate and exist. And it is against this backdrop that Mr. Godfrey Smith, who Prime Minister Rowley referred to, will be the high-level representative for the community on crime and law and order. This is not something that we would have wanted to be able to have to do, but it is an imperative now, given the fact, as I said, that we take no comfort in the fact that the region constitutes one of the largest regions effectively in the, in the global homicide per capita rate. We are the largest grouping in the first 10 countries with the highest rate globally. Please.
Yeah, this is Patricia Duncan, Caribbean correspondent for the UK Guardian. Um, I wanted to ask if the, the matter of slavery reparations came up. I know that, um, Prime Minister Mitchell spoke quite passionately about this, and also that the, the fact that, um, there is a, a new 10-point plan, so just want to get an update on that. Thanks.
The, the heads agreed that the Prime Ministerial Subcommittee on Reparations would meet, but that without prejudice to this, we were settled that the need for apology and the need for compensation remains absolutely important to us, that the concept of reparations would take the question of the development repair, and it would be multi-generational. Um, it is important for us to have the Prime Ministerial Subcommittee meeting, which will be arranged at some point in the future, to be able to refine our negotiating mandate. Um, we at this stage are conscious that what needs to happen is face-to-face discussions, and that while there have been instances of people offering a public apology or even a quantum, as in the case of the Church of England, there has been no face-to-face discussion which we deem as absolutely important, because if you can't see me or hear me, it is not appropriate to be able to make a judgment as to who or what I am and what I should receive.
Hi, Shaq.
My, I just add to this question, that we also, um, there are two, there are two uh parallel course to achieving a result here. Another, by the way, the negotiations which the sub, uh, which the Subcommittee is looking into, um, we're also looking now at what legal avenues that we could engage to ensure that we can have perhaps a judicial response or answer if negotiations fail. And in that regard, we also want just to point out that reparations for wrongdoings and similar situations, not new. The, uh, the Jews and the Holocaust, Ger- the, the Germans negotiated $50 billion reparations, and, and Jews are still today, I think, getting checks for, for the harm that was done to that community um during that period. The, the South Korean comfort ladies were compensated by Japan, um, in a total of about a million, $1 billion, and which goes to them and their families and, and to provide cultural and other assistance for them. And the United States themselves, in following, yes, recently, I think it was in 1988, they passed a reparation act to, to, um, to compensate, uh, the, the, the US citizens of Japanese descent who were detained during World War II. And so it's nothing new, and, and these are some of the information that we have to put forward and ensure that people don't think that this is some new, new aberration by, by African descendants.
Hi, Jacqueline Charles with the Miami Herald. Two questions about Haiti, but I just want to say Turks and Caicos self-rule, we're three in elections since constitutional issues. We're back, we're, we're good. Several of you, three, three countries here have a total of 31 individuals boots on the ground in Haiti. And Haitians have been asking, so where are the CARICOM forces? When or if are they going to arrive? Um, we saw the announcement that Barbados said they were putting their troops on hold. Prime Minister Holness, you, you mentioned the advanced deployment, um, but we haven't seen that. The Bahamas, we've heard that instead of being in Haitian waters, you want your boat somewhere between Haiti and the Bahamas for migration. So I just want to have you all address, um, in terms of the CARICOM participation, um, because the, the ones who are there are doing a valiant effort, I'm not going to go into details, but, 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 but they have been, but you all have all acknowledged that what's on the ground right now is not sufficient, you're committed, but when will we see that commitment turn into boots? And then also the issue of visas. Yesterday, President Donald Trump rolled back, um, you know, legal protections for Haitians in the United States. It affects more than 500,000 Haitians that are there, but at the same time, in CARICOM countries, Haitians are being denied visas. Um, in fact, I'm told that just last month, Haitians were denied visas to Barbados in order for them to go to Jamaica, they need to have visas. One of the realities right now is the US Embassy has not been functional for the last four years, and so the only way the Haitians who qualify for visas, they actually have to physically leave, and the airspace between Haiti and the Dominican Republic is closed, as well as the border. So I just want to have you all address that, because if you go to Washington, they're going to raise this issue in terms of you're coming to us and talking to us about TPS, but you yourselves are also shutting Haitians out.
It, it, it is clear that this is one of the key issues that we will address with the United States government. Suffice it to say that at this point in time, the situation in Haiti is not a normal situation, and we are trying to have aspects of it stabilized as urgently as possible. I referred in my opening statement that this goes back to September 2022. As it relates to Barbados, our position really has always been that our numbers are better suited in providing the technical support. Um, when it comes to that, we did that previously with respect to the establishment of a treasury in Haiti. Um, we don't have the numbers that other countries have with respect to the capacity to offer those boots on the ground. I believe Prime Minister Holness wants to address this issue, but may I also say that the international community is now engaged in trying to see how best we can have an appropriate response at scale, and I would urge us to just be patient and allow the next few days and weeks to play out. Thank you.
The support for Haiti regionally remains strong, and our commitment to Haiti is unchanged. The impact of CARICOM and the support of CARICOM for Haiti is not just manifest by boots on the ground. We should recognize that the good office support provided by the eminent persons group was instrumental in helping and supporting our Haitian brothers and sisters in coming to the position where they are now, which is a, a far better position than they were a year ago in terms of the Transitional Presidential Council. Uh, and so we, we shouldn't devalue or dismiss or ignore that part of CARICOM's effort. The commitment for troops and other personnel remains. Jamaica sent a command group to Haiti to assist in development of logistics and planning. Uh, that group is due for rotation, they're there for almost six months. Upon rotation, a larger group will be sent, possibly double the size, and then shortly thereafter, the full complement that we committed of 200 will be on the ground. We should also bear in mind that the establishment uh and preparation for a deployment is not a straightforward one, and we have to ensure that when we deploy, issues such as the availability of medevac, the availability of facilities to, to properly and appropriately house the personnel, that those are in existence, and that may not have always been the case. So we have to build out and deploy troops according to the facilities that are available. I am confident and I, and I'm satisfied that all the facilities will be available for full deployment and for a full rollout of, of all the commitments that we have made. I'm, I'm, I'm heartened by what I heard from the Secretary General. I won't go into details as to what was discussed, that will, I'm certain, be discussed publicly. Um, and the approach that will have to be made again at the Security Council. So, you know, we're not satisfied, obviously, with where we are in Haiti, but I think we should also look at the progress that, uh, we have made with the deployment of troops, certainly from Kenya and other countries in the region, and what Jamaica has done and other Caribbean countries have provided. And what I'm also very heartened by is that the Haitian people themselves are making the effort to take charge of their own situation.
Kelly Pujard from Martinique TV, Martinique La Première. Madam Prime Minister, what kind of cooperation, what kind of projects do you want to initiate with Martinique, the future Associate Member of CARICOM?
I think that both, um, Martinique as well as the rest of the community have strategic advantages in a number of areas. Martinique has certainly been a leader in the provision of healthcare and, um, advanced healthcare, and a number of our citizens within the community, particularly those closer to Martinique and St. Lucia, in Dominica, in some instances Barbados, St. Vincent, have benefited on an ad hoc basis. Um, as Martinique is integrated as an Associate Member into the community, we would expect to be able to see how we can have technical cooperation that would benefit us. We would like to see greater freedom, greater movement, um, and participation. And then, of course, this issue of language, and if we as Caribbean people can remove the burden of historical legacy, combined with the separation of language, then we would be so much more powerful. Um, your, your government today reflected in its speech to us about the critical importance of contributions from not only the builders of the independence and integration movement in CARICOM, but figures like Emi Sissier had a fundamental influence on thought leaders and Pan-Africanists within the English-speaking Caribbean. And I think that this, as was said, after 300, I think, and 89 years, this is a historic moment for the people of Martinique, and I look forward to us really giving the opportunity for the integration to be a lived reality for our citizens.
Thank you, Prime Minister, and we have come to the end of our.
One last question.
Okay.
And then get put over to Barbados.
Good night, everyone. Antoinette Connel from The Nation Newspaper. I'm going to change the tempo a bit. Can you tell us whether West Indies cricket was discussed, and if it wasn't, why, why not?
I'm not supposed to know anything about cricket, so I'm going to pass it to Keith.
Um, yes, we cannot have a, in, in recent times, we have not been having heads of government meeting without having a component from Western Indies cricket. We did have some discussion, not too much detail, because we have done some work before in Guyana and Trinidad and Tobago, and we've seen some results, some progress have been made and, uh, being made, but the main thing is that, um, because this is the end of my tenure as Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago, and my last meeting at CARICOM, today I handed over to the, in, at plenary, um, and the heads selected or agreed to select my colleague from Guyana, who is an eminent cricketer, as you know, President Ufanaali, to now take the chairmanship of the Subcommittee on Cricket, because we maintain our interest in the potential for Western Indies cricket to remain at the high level internationally and the preservation of our legacy, and heads of government should continue to be interested in what goes on in Western Indies cricket and assist wherever we can.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, brings us to the end of our press conference.
Before you go.
Before we go.
Before you go, Madame Moderator. Oh, that Prime Minister Rowley has more time to spend in the pavilion as a spectator. We, his colleagues who remain on the field, wish him well. And for me personally, uh, coming in as Prime Minister, um, in 2016 and meeting Prime Minister Rowley at a time when relations between Jamaica and Trinidad were possibly at an all-time low, um, where there were threats of boycotts and threats of, uh, blocking citizens' movements. Uh, and then we met and struck up a friendship, you recall? And I said, listen, Prime Minister, come, come to Jamaica, come and visit me, man, let us talk this thing over. And Prime Minister Rowley graciously accepted the visit to Jamaica. You were my first international guest, and we had a good, a very good talk about the issues. We developed a, a very strong relationship, and we were able to resolve the issues. And I think today, trade is better, movement of citizens between the two countries are better. I think the region is better, and I want to publicly say how pleased I am and how privileged I feel to have served with you as a colleague in this fraternity, um, and that you are truly the epitome of a Caribbean man. Definitely, you will be missed on the scene, but I'm sure your voice will be heard. What would my friend?
Let me join. Thank you. Uh, you know, we have a Corey situation here. But I want to, uh, really say that Prime Minister Rowley and myself, we have developed a very strong friendship. He is my brother, and his contribution to Guyana is enormous from many perspectives. Many of you may not recall, but Prime Minister Rowley was the Chair of CARICOM during a very difficult period after the 2020 elections in Guyana. A time when there was great tension, democracy was under threat, rule of law, and respect for the results from the elections. Prime Minister Rowley arrived from international engagement at 2:00 AM in the morning, called by Prime Minister Motley, the Bureau, members of the Bureau at that time, and made his way to Guyana. And the rest is history. Democracy, rule of law, the respect for the elections, and, and having the region leading in the resolution was a historic moment for this region. And I want to applaud his leadership as Chair and the entire team at that time that allowed CARICOM to resolve a matter within CARICOM. The second historic moment in the relationship of Guyana and Trinidad, but in the region itself, was when we achieved the Argyle Agreement. itself, was when we achieved the Argyle Agreement in St. Vincent. You would recall that many Prime Ministers, and I want to, I I did then, I will continue to do so, to thank the Prime Ministers who left their homes and journeyed to St. Vincent to help us in a very delicate time to resolve an issue where the temperature was high. And I want to thank you again, Prime Minister Rowley, for your personal commitment and your involvement in that matter. Your strong views, you know, those who know him, the stone face, don't, don't, we carried away with the stone, the stone face and their and their hard views. Beneath that, we have had, since my time here, very strong conversation, but at the end of it, they were all geared towards the best interests of the region and to give us the best possible result. I want to thank you for your friendship, for your guidance and for the way in which we have been able to work together, Guyana and Trinidad, but in the region, to strengthen our relationship and our bonds. I wouldn't say I missed you because I'm sure, I've said it publicly already, that the experience our leaders built up over the years must continue to be the reservoir of knowledge and also the asset that we must rely on in this region. Thank you very much for your service, sir.
If this was the Court of Appeal and I'm the third judge to deliver my judgment, I'll just say I concur, which I do, I concur. I encountered Keith during the course of my own political career several over the years, but was always very, very fleeting. And my first observation was, you know, Ifan talks about stone face, I used to say this is stony fellow, and a stone, I mean, it's just cold. And I don't know, someone told me, I don't know whether it's Andrew or or Orfan says, when I actually became Prime Minister twenty twenty-one, said, no, he's a good guy, you know, just get to know him. Just get to know him and he'll know that he's a good guy. I got to know him and he truly made, became a good guy. Then I realized that he was a geologist and that's why he became what he worked with, a stone. But again, he's been a rock, an anchor for the steady progress that we have made since I was here as the, as part of the CARICOM leadership. And we've always been, I've always been able to depend on him. He's been dependable as a rock. He's been as steady as a rock and he has, as I said, been the anchor for what we've been doing over the years. And I don't think, and I've been talking to some of my my colleagues, my former Prime Ministers in the Bahamas, and their observation has been always, they have never, they have not seen CARICOM as unified as they're seeing it today. There was always some issue and I think, and I sense the unity. We all, we are all saying we are one accord, we we have our differences, we talk it through and then we hug and kiss afterwards. And so, and I think that is also due to the fact that there's always this anchor who keeps us together. And let me just tell the rock, we will miss you here, but as you know, we'll continue to call on you and you have a place to play golf.
I just have to tell the men who continue to refer to Keith as a stony-faced person, that is not the person who moved with me on Wednesday evening when I tried to get the crowd to dance to the Christchurch Steel Foundation Steel Orchestra. And he was up front and center helping me to bring the others. And and the truth is, Keith, people talk about flying fish in Tobago and Rafan talked about curry, but the one thing that we appreciate is your commitment always to face facts fairly and squarely. You have been highly principled and you have been never fearful of a situation. And we will take from you that as we continue to manage our affairs in this community. And as all have said, we know that you are a phone call away and that you, your love for this region is really what has driven you to excel in the manner in which you have. The last word, my dear friend, at the forty-eighth Heads of Government Conference of the Caribbean Community must be yours.
Thank you very much.
He wants to speak too, so the whole time. I just met Prime Minister Rowley because it's my first experience in this meeting as Head of State, but honestly, for the past two days, I've learned a lot from you. You're not shy.
Not at all.
Through, through all the discussions, I can say he's a man of wisdom. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm humbled by your comments and it's not very often in the political arena that you manage to elicit such positive comments. Usually it is the opposite and and probably only gets modified after you're dead. But it's good to be alive and to be among friends who can speak like that of you. I am humbled and I am grateful for having been a part of this team. And just for the moment, permit me to say that when I joined this group of people with the responsibility for our Caribbean nation, it was a time when there was a huge negative view on CARICOM. And at my first meeting in Guyana, our elder statesman Ralph Gonzalez, speaking from no script, but speaking from the heart, criticized the Caribbean region and those who write about us and speak about us for downplaying what we have been able to accomplish through CARICOM. And he asked us not to undervalue CARICOM, even though there was a long journey, he's still here, that was twenty fifteen. And it pleased me when at the opening outgoing Chairman Young Deacon Mitchell said on Wednesday night, I think it was, that he came in as a Prime Minister in CARICOM, very skeptical of this thing that he had to work in called CARICOM, but he admitted that he had become a convert to CARICOM and a great believer in this entity. And I think it means a lot to us that we are, in fact, a valuable gathering. And as Prime Minister of Trinidad and Tobago, who hosted us all at the fiftieth anniversary at the founding location in Shagaramas recently, I simply want to leave by asking my colleagues to continue to subscribe to what I've encouraged you to do because together we are always stronger in every single circumstance. Once we are together, we will be stronger. We might not grow in size physically, but certainly we will not be inconsequential, especially, especially at this time where the world is changing from news hour to news hour. We are required to rise to the occasion and never accept that we can be left behind. So I'm moving on, away from office, but not away from the region or from my friends. I want to thank all of you who have already invited me to spend some time with you in your various territories, including Martinique, where I've climbed so many volcanoes. And today was a very emotional moment for me to be a part of the Caribbean nation welcoming Martinique into CARICOM as an Associate Nation. This is something that is like a dream come true. And if there's anything I can do to continue to be of service to the people of the Caribbean, it is the one nation that I have, the country of Trinidad and Tobago in CARICOM, and I will never shy away from defending or serving as I've tried to do. So thanks for all of you who made it possible for me to contribute and to be with you as a brother and as a Caribbean man. So having said that, thanks again and we look forward. And and on that basis, I accept the honor to bring this unusually successful historic meeting to a close. The forty-eighth Conference of the Heads of Government is now at an end. Thank you for your attention.